Good evening and thank you for joining us for the School District of the City of Dearborn Regular Meeting, October 11th, 2022. It is 7:04. Before we do a roll call, we've got an overflow situation tonight. So I know we've got some attendees that are standing right now. Just know that we're also streaming this out in the hall and down in Room 12. So if you want to be able to have a seat or just be able to move around a little bit, we can always call you up when it's time for the public comment. With that, I'll call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Trustee Sam Berry.
Here.
Trustee Patrick D'Ambrazio.
Yeah.
Trustee Roxanne McDonald. We can't hear you, Trustee McDonald.
Trustee McDonald, can you hear us?
No.
Oh, we can hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Can you hear us?
Just tell us that you're here and where you are.
I'm here in Dearborn, Michigan. I was having trouble hearing you, but I can hear you now as well.
Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Adam Mazup here. Trustee Mary Petlicov.
Here.
Trustee Irene Watts.
Here in Dearborn, Michigan.
President James Thorpe.
Here in Dearborn.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Shannon Peterson, Principal of Long Elementary, will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
President Thorpe and trustees, I'm thrilled to be here to introduce three wonderful student leaders from Long Elementary. I have Jaden Davis and Sakina Ramadan and Mia Abu Salah to lead the pledge.
I pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, yeah, USA. I pledge allegiance to the school before me, to the teachers, to the teachers, to follow school rules and to respect the rights of others. I am proud of myself and my community. I am a Long School student. Yeah, yeah, here for school.
Don't go anywhere, guys. Come on up.
Good job.
Thank you for being here. Sakina. Thank you. Jaden, thank you very much. Maya, thank you very much. Great job, guys.
Great job.
Next item, please.
Next item is superintendent's update.
So I wanted to first apologize, I'm not there in person. I am virtual tonight. I had scheduled part of the day off and wasn't feeling well as the day progressed. So I talked to President Thorpe and we thought it was the responsible thing to join virtual. So that's why I'm virtuallying. Otherwise, and I don't think I've had many board meetings, so you know, appreciate your patience with that. So I want to start with retirement. Robin Hanson, I want to congratulate and thank them for the many years of service. We have Robin Hanson over 22 years, Christina Kjaskowski over 31 years, Chris Misco over 46 years of service, tenured retirement gathering, Laura Phelps, 14 years, and Ida Somam, 24 years. If we can just recognize them, I think we should congratulate them. So I'm going to move along with my commentary and I appreciate Dr. Sholto stepping in for me at a seat that I normally sit at and thank you for doing that. I do have some very good, some positive announcements. The Blue River Schools, we have had 104, we college and Hay Elementary, two in one year. This is five Blue River Schools in five years. And there's only one other, I researched it, one other school that has ever had that within the state of Michigan. They only give away approximately 13 every year. So congratulations to the district and congratulations to those schools. And we look forward to having them presented in November. We will be going with Washington for that award. So if we can recognize, I don't know if it's two schools, but the entire district for the delivery. I also, we're going to start bringing in different individuals, different classifications. But we have the Teacher of the Year winners from the Student Choice Awards from the Chamber for Commerce. And I want to congratulate, and I know David, I know who's there in person, but we have Katie Morello, Ryan Dane, Clint Grace, and Fatty Constantinas from Fortson.
If any of you would like to comment, please do.
I would. President Thorpe, thank you, and Dr. Malenko for the school board. I was unable to attend the, I guess I'm a little loud, but I was unable to attend. The Teacher of the Year Award was at work, working. So my apologies for that. But to thank you, the Dearborn Chamber of Commerce and the city of Dearborn, it's an honor to be Teacher of the Year this year. And Dr. Malenko, I don't know if you can see the crowd behind me, but this is a, this award is for those teachers right there who bust their butts day in and day out for these students of Dearborn. So thank you so much.
This will be my comment. So you can take my comment card out. I did some research after receiving this, and I learned that the Teacher of the Year Award began in 1997 under the leadership of Alberta Muirhead. At the time, there was a lot of discussion about how essential it was to attract, retain, and encourage excellent teachers. Ms. Muirhead suggested at that time, 24 years ago, that the Dearborn Chamber of Commerce should recognize outstanding teachers in our community. And I'm so proud that I received this. This year, I was honored to be recognized as the P2 Teacher of the Year. One of my students wrote a letter about the experience he had being a student in my classroom. What dawned on me as I sobbed through the reading of his nomination is this. The things that actually mean something are not in the job description. It is hard to qualify the experiences that will stick with our teachers or with our students, but I think it is really fair to say that the best way we as educators can impact the lives of our students is to interact with our students and their families as humans. There's no way to measure this. Excellent teaching isn't something that can be quantified on a rubric. It is something that is felt in the heart. And in Dearborn, excellent teaching isn't exceptional, it's the norm. Since being handed this glass apple, I have experienced a celebration of my teaching like never before. To be honest, I don't feel that I did anything extraordinary this year compared to the previous 15 years that I've proudly served the Dearborn Public Schools. Yet this year, I'm experiencing a lot of cake, kind notes, balloons, chocolate, and squeals of delight, especially from my colleagues. My administrators, colleagues I've worked with throughout the years, and my current William Ford family have made me feel special for simply doing what teachers do. So tonight, I would like to return some of this excitement and recognize just a few of the educators who are really exemplifying what it means to be an excellent educator. To the educator who makes color copies at home and owns their own laminator, all because their students need supplemental and engaging materials, you are excellent. To the educator who drove all over Dearborn delivering school assignments and care packages to homes, you are excellent. To the educator who made dinner for a family that was under stress, you are excellent. To the educator who is on call 24/7 and helping families through email, remind, class dojo, or even just their personal cellphone, you are excellent. To the educator who makes all holidays special for students, you are excellent. To the educator who has collected money from their own family and friends so that they can purchase books for their students to take home, you are excellent. To the educator who puts their students' needs ahead of their own children's needs, you are excellent. To the educator who coordinated drive-through graduations and celebrations, you are excellent. To the educator who is collaborating with their PLC team at 2:00 AM on WhatsApp, your team needs you and appreciates your support, you are excellent. And to each of our Dearborn educators, the principals, the teachers, the social workers, the speech and language pathologists, the psychologists, the occupational therapists, the physical therapists, the nurses, the paraprofessionals, and all of the adults who work so hard to support our students, thank you for being excellent. You are what makes Dearborn an exceptional place to be.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morello.
Okay, I will continue. I believe we have Ms. Sarah Glasser in the room, and she was appointed last month as the coordinator at Fortson High School. I'd welcome her to come up to the podium.
Good evening. Hi, everyone. I'm following in some pretty big footsteps here, and I would like to echo that what is happening here is excellent. I am so honored to be part of the Dearborn team. My first month so far at Fortson has been nothing but positive. The students have charmed me. They are so witty, and I find myself laughing out loud every day. So I'm just very happy to be here. The staff has been warm and welcoming. We have already started learning and growing together, and I really truly do look forward to many more years on the Dearborn staff. Please come to Fortson. I'd be happy to talk with you and show you around and share some of my ideas with you and hear some of your ideas. But again, it's really an honor to be joining the Dearborn team. I'm very happy to be here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sarah. So I'll continue to move along. So I do want to comment on the staff shortage that we're facing nationally in the state of Michigan. I'm going to ask Mr. Wall to come up and Ms. Hilda Arani to talk about some of the things we're doing, both from retention and compensation. And I know there's a lot of people here tonight. We value our teachers. We value all of our staff, to be honest. It is a tough competitive time right now, and we want to, you know, the one thing I would say is that we are talking about everything we've been doing over the last several years has been about adding compensation to our staff. Years ago, we all remember the times, the tough budget cuts, and I hope it doesn't happen again, but we all, many of us remember those times. And right now, what we've been trying to do is to get back to our staff, to recognize our staff, both with compensation and through other means. I was at the State Superintendent Conference a couple weeks ago, and the main issue that Dr. Roy, State Superintendent, talked about was the teacher shortage, which previous superintendent, State Superintendent, who was superintendent in Dearborn, Brian Wiston flagged for us about six, seven years ago that it was coming. So we are going to continue to implement processes that will recognize our staff, contain our staff, and then grow capacity like our early college and pre-education, and providing support through our teachers and those that are looking for different certifications. And so we're going to continue to do that. We also know that it's not just a, we know of districts that have had to close transportation, for example. So we have a lot of work to do because of what's going on, not only because of COVID, but because of shortage. And so we want to continue, and we will, to talk to our union officials and work on ways to not only grow capacity, but to recognize individuals, whether that be monetary or other ways. And what I would say, and Mr. Wall's going to come up, the one good positive thing is we're not talking about cuts or reductions or freezes. What we're talking about is giving compensation back to all. And we have had to get competitive because when it comes down to it, bottom line is that we want to have certified teachers from students, and so we've had to get competitive with that. So I'm going to have Mr. Wall come up and Mr. Arani to talk a little bit about what we've added. And I also want to mention, and maybe we could do this right now, Mr. Mustin, you know, the summer school. The summer school program, we did give compensation at the highest level of any other district in the state. And we did that for, we knew we needed it for the students. So for example, teachers could earn up to $19,500 over in the week period. But the reason we did it is because we value our staff. We did get a lot of staff that worked at all levels. And secondly, we knew that our students needed it coming out of COVID. So I'm going to ask Mr. Mustin in, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Wall to come up, but I would like us to play that summer school video. And this is the reason why we did it, because we want to make a difference for our students. And everyone has had a tough year, including our great staff that we value so much. So David and his team always do a great job putting that together, and I'm going to turn it over. And obviously, the students needed it. That's just an example of the positive that was going on, not only in the summer, but continues to go on with our employees, our teachers, and all of our staff. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wall, who has a presentation on compensation and retention.
Good evening, President Thorpe, board members. I will be quick. So this is not a local issue. This is a statewide issue. It's a national issue. When I've talked to my counterparts in the state and across the country, everybody's dealing with this. Don't feel like we're isolated in dealing with this. This is across the nation. So I just kind of captured, you know, with the help of HR, some of the articles that are going around in the, in the, in the most locally and the national. And so you can notice that there is a shortage. I won't go through and read them all. You guys can read them at your leisure. But, but you can see, it just, it is a national issue, that, you know, the compensation of teachers is being focused on right now because it is very low in a lot of states. Michigan is higher. I think it's ranked 41st in the area, but it's still, it's, it's a low compensation compared to what the private industry is doing. The pandemic has really brought this issue more to the forefront, not just for teachers, but for all jobs. As you can see, a lot of the compensation is going up in all fields. It's hard to find people to be employed to work all of these jobs. So we're seeing that as a shortage you see in the marketplace, you know, and grocery stores where you can't find things on the stocks. We're dealing with it in the food service area where we cannot get distributors because they don't have people to unload the ships in California for the distributors. So it's a, it's a national issue that we're dealing with. So one of the things I just wanted to point out that, you know, we're addressing this issue. We're continuously working with that. We're talking to the unions almost daily and talking to staff because the staff has questions too. And, and we're going to keep working on this until we get it right. You know, it's something that's not a short-term solution for this large of an issue. It's something we're going to have to continue to work on, on and on as we go along. But some of the things that you can see on this article that some schools are really struggling, you know, least point schools had to close and go virtual for their middle school because of lack of staff to be able to run the school in person. You know, busting, you know, busting is being eliminated in school districts, which would be important for us because we have a large contingent that had to be bussed, and we have bus drivers. But it's constantly being pressured to offer more compensation to keep our drivers, otherwise they go to a neighboring district. The pool is very small, so people are actually trying to attract people from existing places and schools to move for another school. So it's something we're constantly dealing with. So what we have done, we tried, HR has done an excellent job of trying to do the recruitment and retention for initiatives throughout the area. We have done special ed. It's been a focus area for us to try to make sure we have staff because that's the at-risk population we're really trying to address. You know, compensation for time off, extra pay opportunities, as Dr. Malenko mentioned. For summer school, we originally budgeted about $32 million for summer school for 11,500 students. We did 8,400 students, and that came to 26.2 million. And most of that was paid from a state grant and majority from our ESR funds. So it was lucky that the federal government had given us these ESR funds to be able to run this program. Otherwise, the students that were virtual all year long would really struggle at the beginning of this year. There was a nice transition for those that opted in to be able to at least get some focus and back dealing face-to-face. The overall compensation was roughly about $6.6 million we paid above and beyond what we normally would have paid. And that goes back to the rates that we were paying for teachers being one of the highest ones in the state. We have, you know, great support programs, Teacher University. We, we had a contract settled in 2018, and by law, we didn't have to go back and negotiate any additional compensation all the way through 2023. But that's not what we're here for. We have good relationships with our unions. We sat back on the table. We're constantly having those things. Some things have gotten done. Some are going to take longer to do because it's a give-and-take situation. It's mutual agreement on a compensation that we deal with all our staff. And, you know, you know.
And if I could add, Tom, could I add in there too, just that, you know, we got to balance that. We value staff, and it's true that we want to give compensation, just like we did for summer school because our students need it. We have to balance that. And so as we provide compensation for staff, we're also making sure that we take care of all of our students and what the needs are. And that's why we have some, we have the best teachers and the best staff really in the state. That's truly what I believe and I have seen from going into the building. So that is why we've been talking about additions to compensation. None of these conversations have been about reductions or freezes or anything. It's been, how can we compensate our staff to give them additional compensation, to recognize them and retain them? So thank you, Mr. Wall.
And we also have one of the most economical, good health plans for our staff through the DSHP. That's something that's run by the unions that actually develop what the health plans are. We contribute to that on an FTE basis, and it's actually returned a low cost out of the employees for their share. I think a little over $100 for, you know, a family and down from there for less than, which is good for, you know, a pay period for any compensation. And we're always looking at, you know, what we call on schedule and off schedule. So what we talk about on schedule is that's something that compensation that continues for year after year after year. That's like your base salary, your longevity, you know, those kinds of things that actually will continue paying year after year. Things we call off schedule, as part of the 2018 contract, we gave a half percent in 18, another half percent in 2021. So those are things we call off schedule. They happen once, but they don't continue year after year. So that's something we're always balancing as we look at trying to balance the budget of what we can do continuously and what we can do as a one-time. You know, for example, this last year, the teachers and sports staff that worked during the pandemic got $500 and $250. You know, that was something the state decided to do that came through us. In addition, we had summer school. Those that worked summer school got additional stipend just in the last check for working the summer school. So those are what we call one-time things that actually help the employee but do not continue ongoing because those are coming from special funding sources. And again, just, again, special education is something we're really focused on because that is a hard position to fill these days. And also, the state is working on it. The state's looking at, trying to look at, you know, critical shortage areas and allowing retirees to come back easier because it's part of the retirement system. They're limited on what month they can earn when they're retired. And so the state is starting to lift some of those so retirees can go back, earn more money, and help school districts teach kids.
And Mr. Wall, I know the state just allowed teachers that may have expired their certificate for not getting the sketchies, we call it, the credit. They're allowing them to continue to teach. It's a new implementation from the Michigan Department of Education because of the shortage. They're actually allowing for a waiver on those sketchies.
So this schedule just shows, I know you can't see it in the audience, but in case I get a little graph showing where our revenue is, our blue line is our revenue line, where we've been looking roughly about, you know, a 2% increase on an annual basis. However, our compensation on the red line has gone continually higher at closer, now it's reaching 4% on an annual basis. And then our yellow line is our retirement cost. I keep that in there because that's something that we have to be cognizant of. That's the pension system that the district pays on behalf. Just this last week, we mailed home total compensation letters to the employees just so they understand what the total cost, because they might earn a salary, but the cost of the district is much larger than that. So we make sure they're aware of that aspect. And I was going to have the beginning wages, but that required a lot of time going back to, you know, 2000 or 1996, what beginning salary wages was to kind of show that. I'll show that in the next future slide, you know, somewhere down the line in another board meeting, kind of show you where our beginning scale has gone over the years. So just talking about the numbers, budgeting in schools has been difficult with the passage of Proposal A. Back in 1993, 94, we used to levy our own local taxes, and we could decide how many taxes we laid, what kind of a program we were going to offer, you know, the students and the parents in our, in our district. At Proposal A, the sales tax went from 4% to 6%, along with some other minor changes. And they now work, we're relying on the state to determine a legislative process and sometimes political of how much we're going to offer schools every year on an increase. So that has really taken the local power away and put it at the state level. And as you're aware, the state doesn't always act on a timely schedule, especially for us, because our school year starts July 1st, but the state doesn't start till October 1st. So a lot of times, we don't know what our state revenue is going to be until the year has already began, sometimes even halfway through the year before we would know. So that always gives us a roller coaster because we have to make a lot of estimates on what we're going to pay staff, how we're going to run a program. So that's always a roller coaster in my eyes because it goes up and down all the time. So we always have to be aware of the legislative, political aspects when we're working on funding. And again, this is a union district, so we So we have to agree. The union works with us to figure out what kind of program we can offer for our students, which means what can we pay staff and what other support, like supplies, utilities, and all that, we're going to do for developing our budget. But again, the union process is a negotiation process. So based in compensation back in 2017, we're roughly about $130 million base for our salaries. Now we're 153 million. So we've added a lot of money to our compensation over the years. Back in 2018, when we settled the contract, we were scheduling to give $24 million to the staff back in 2018 as additional compensation from where they were at that time. Well, that number has grown to roughly about 65 million now. And that is a factor of us trying to do some special compensation for off-schedule. We had to revise our salary schedules to attract new talent to here. And, and subtracting new talent, you have to be competitive with what your neighbor's going to offer. Otherwise, they won't come to Dearborn. Even though Dearborn's a great place, you know, money has a telling tale for people to move from one place to the other. And so as we go through that, you know, our compensation is going to increase for our one-time of roughly 22 million. And our one-time revenues are increasing about 39.5 million over that five-year span from 2018 through this 2023 schedule. And I can get into more detail, but roughly what I'm trying to say is, even though in 2018 we were giving 24 million, you know, that's a static point in time, and times have changed. So now we're up to 65 million in total revenue to all our staff over that time because we had recognized the whole issue we're dealing with of the shortages and for retention and recruitment for our positions. So the bottom line is roughly about a 4% increase over those four years to kind of give an idea that even though our revenue is 2% or less, we realized that, you know, the times have changed, and we had to rebalance how we're doing compensation, had to give additional money to staff. So that's my quick presentation. So, and, you know, I'm willing to ask any question, answer any questions, or we, we can delve deeper if you want to at a finance committee meeting, however the board would like to go.
Let's see about any questions from the board at this time, and then you can always go deeper with the finance committee.
Okay.
Before we do that, Ms. Arani, was there anything that you would want to add? Now, you want us to do questions and then come up for anything additional?
I was going to present on the Dearborn Teacher University.
Okay, so let's, let's have any questions for Mr. Wall right now? Trustee Barry.
Mr. Wall, I know the answer, but I want you to clarify it. I've had parents say, we love our teachers, rightly so. Why can't we go out for a tax increase? You mentioned Proposal A.
Correct.
Why can't we go out for a tax increase to be able to, in Dearborn, to be able to pay our teachers?
Yeah, and
Can you elaborate on that?
Yep, so what's back in Proposal A, that was the issue. There was high taxes on constituents in Michigan. And they had a hard time attracting businesses and people to Michigan because they didn't want to come and pay high taxes on their property homes. So we were capped and no longer be able to modify our tax levels. You know, you had your 18 mills that are non-Hobsted property. That's your businesses. We were actually higher at a snapshot in time. So we also have a hold harmless millage. So we are able to offer more opportunities for our students with that hold harmless millage. But we were no longer able to add any additional millages to for operational purposes. You can still go out for a bond program or a sinking fund program, but those also cost special. But that's something that the board no longer had a problem because Avery Center revenue now comes from the state based on the legislative process on our per pupil allocation for our foundation.
So just to be clear, those bonds, you can't take that money, put it in general fund and pay the teachers?
Correct. Bonds are only for capital improvements, period.
Okay, so I want to make sure you put that out there. Thank you.
And to clarify yet again, all of the tax dollars go to the state, and the state divvies it back out.
It all calculates part of that per pupil allocation. So right now, we're getting 8902 for per student. So the taxes we collect locally get subtracted what the state sends us. So we get down to the 8902. So if more taxes go up, it doesn't matter to us. If more people come, it doesn't matter to us. It used to, but not anymore. Our operation is based on that per pupil allowance, which is a legislative process.
Right.
And the other thing that's factored in there is that the state's got a shortage in the pension system. So they send us money, and then they take a portion back.
Correct, and then some. Yes.
Any additional questions for Mr. Wall before Ms. Arani? Thank you.
All right, thank you. We need David because I don't want to mess up his computer.
Mr. Mustin, come help. While we're waiting for Mr. Mustin, and I want to ask the board if it's okay, if we switch Agenda Items Number 5 and 6 and have public comment before we have our special report?
Do we need a motion for that, or?
No, I just wanted to let everyone know that I'd like to move public comment up sooner so people don't have to be here as long if they don't choose to.
Absolutely. I agree with that.
And could I be able to make a statement before we start this citizen participation? Just a really short one?
If it's short.
It's very short.
Good.
All right, well, hello, everyone. They're working out the presentation part. Thank you, President Thorpe. Thank you, School Board Trustees. Thank you, Dr. Maliko, for having me here this evening. My name is Hilda Iarani. I am the Instructional Coach for School Improvement and for the Dearborn Teacher University. This is my fifth year in this position, my 27th year with the district. So I am a, and I went to Dearborn School, so I'm a lifelong Dearborn, you know, public schools member, and I'm proud of what the work I do. And I'm excited to share a little bit today about what we do for the Dearborn Teacher University, which is our new teacher program. So, can you hear it? She did. Thank you, Vatni. A little bit about our program. So we work with all new hires in Years 1, 2, and 3. Do I share it on there?
David will display it in a little bit.
Okay, awesome. I've got it here, so. Beautiful, thank you. So we work with all new hires in Years 1, 2, and 3 with the district, including hires that come with no prior teaching experience. So those that are brand-new out of college versus the ones that are coming to us from other districts, private schools, charter schools, what have you, that have chosen Dearborn Schools as their new employer. So we work with the administrators to see that a mentor is assigned to them. Mentors work with them on support in terms of learning about the school, resources, strategies, anything that they need to be successful during those first two to three years. That's what the mentor's role is. In addition to this, hopefully we'll get that on there soon. Okay. Our numbers have fluctuated over the years. So like I said, this is my fifth year in the program. Currently, we have 279 teachers in 1, 2, and 3. So that means these are teachers that meet regularly with a mentor. They meet with me for professional development. They are part of our program in terms of support. Yes, that's it right there. Thank you, David. Sure. Apologize for that, everyone. Awesome. And so there you go. You can see a little bit about our numbers there. So we have 175 new teachers that are considered Year 1. That means they've been with this district less than one year or less. Of that group, 125 are hired this from June until today. And we are still hiring. I work with Human Resources. And so as new intakes come in, we see that, you know, we reach out to them. I send out a welcome email. I've been doing school visits to meet with them personally, to make sure that they have, answer any questions they have, make sure that they have the resources that they need. We work with the administrators to see that a mentor is assigned within the first two weeks of their start date to make sure that they have that relationship and that support at the building level. Okay. And once a mentor comes, or I'm sorry, a new hire comes to us with prior experience, something we like to point out, they only are in the program for two years rather than three. We honor their experience. And so really, our role more is just to, you know, provide that Dearborn touch of understanding, you know, the resources that we have and who we are as a district. And that way, they can connect names with faces and such. Okay, so a little bit more about what we do. Like I said, mentors are assigned for three years if they are coming in with prior experience. Like I said, it was two. We are doing school visits. So far this year, I've probably been to over 40 different school visits in the last three and a half weeks or so, before school, after school, during their prep times, like I said, just to make sure that I am accessible. It's not limited to first years. I am available to second and third years as well, whether it's a question about professional development, certificate renewals, evaluation questions. I tell them, no question's a dumb question. Please ask. That's, you know, my job. I'm here to, you know, answer. And if I don't know the answer, I do my best to connect them with the resource person in the district that can answer their questions. As of last year, when we went online, we took many of our resources, including the professional development, and moved it virtual. And so we went to Schoology. Just like classroom teachers were offering instruction on Schoology, everything Dearborn Teacher University went online as well. So that Schoology course now has really evolved, and both new hires as well as their mentors are encouraged to go there. This is where they go for our virtual professional development. So the Zoom link is there. This is where they go for their weekly, bi-weekly, or monthly meetings with their teams. So this is where they document. This is where they go for resources. We record our professional development. So the Zoom links are available so they can watch the recordings there. So we really want to make it an all-inclusive classroom for them that they can visit, and it makes it easy for them to locate information. A few words about our professional development, really based on their feedback. And I value their feedback, and I encourage it continuously. We moved to virtual this year, even for professional development. Even though we are in-person for instruction, we know there's a lot on their plate between teaching all day, worrying about their classrooms, worrying about their families and their home lives. We switched to all virtual professional development. So we offer professional development probably every three to four weeks. The calendar is extensive, and it covers topics really that showcase the resources and the departments in our district. And so these are a few of the topics there that you can see. We, from teacher evaluation to understanding Michigan Department of Ed's renewal process for earning their, renewal of their certificate, classroom management, of course, understanding the curricular resources. We spend some time on that. Special education, bilingual. We really want them to feel that they can pick and choose from this calendar their needs, their, you know, requests. I'm constantly adding based on their feedback. But we really want to make this something for them. And I tell them that. I go, this is not for me. I, like I said, 27 years of the district. I kind of know where things are at. It's really for you. As that new educator in our district, how can we thus support you? So I welcome any questions you might have. Like I said, I love what I do. I love working with the new teachers. And, you know, I thank Mrs. Farage for all her support and her leadership and guidance. And we're always communicating on how we can make the experience better for our, our new staff. So, thank you.
Trustee Moser.
Yeah, thank you for this presentation. I truly appreciate your role as well at the district. My question is, if an existing teacher who's been with the district for more than three years, and they're interested in perhaps having a mentor to either move up or get another endorsement or just needing more mentorship, can they also be part of the program?
That is not something that we, I would open the professional development to them, and we have on multiple opportunities, especially when we've had sessions such as classroom management, professional learning communities, unpacking standards. We have opened up our, our meetings to veteran staff. And I, we've had veteran staff take advantage of our sessions. So we have done that in the past and continue to do so. So it's not limited just to our DTU.
Right, but as far as the mentorship by another teacher, that's what I'm assuming, right? The mentor is another teacher?
That would be something, I mean, I would be fine with that. That would be, building administrators really assign the mentors, and we just coordinate all of that to make sure that the mentors receive, they qualify for a stipend as well as for the sketch credit for their certificate renewal.
And I'm, I'm really glad that you moved them to virtual because it adds a lot of flexibility to the teachers so they can just sign in from wherever they are to. And are those tracked?
They are. That's, that's something that I do. Yeah, I track all their professional development. They receive reports at the semester mark and then again at the end mark. They also, depending on their experience or not having experience, they have to log their hours for Michigan Department of Ed as well. So we work with them, and I always touch base to make sure if they are struggling and getting those hours complete, on giving them options.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
Trustee Pelichkov.
I'm assuming they get regular feedback from all of the mentoring that is going on so that they can kind of assess their, their input as well with the program?
Yeah, well, when they work in the weekly or bi-weekly or monthly, again, depending on what year they are in the, in the program, we encourage them to do observations. So I've, I've told new teachers, go into your mentor's classroom and vice versa. Nothing is evaluative. We make that very clear. This is all about
That was going to be my next question.
Nothing is about, we want that safe relationship. We want them to grow as educators. At the same time, we want them to feel not worried about that trust issue.
They're not under a microscope.
No, nothing. Exactly. It's pretty much, how can you help me? How can I get better? What can I do? And mentors have said to me, my, you know, my, I learn from my mentee. They're coming in with those fresh perspectives and those ideas, and so they're working together. So it's a win-win. We're really looking for that.
So everybody's communicating with everybody, and nobody feels that they're, they're being judged?
We hope. We hope. And if there are issues, then we work with the administrator to identify what's going on and to see how we can come to a resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for Mrs. Arani? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I will just continue along. And I know we have President Thorpe, Mohammed Zaban is here, but he has to leave. So I'm going to ask that we do his presentation now, if that's possible. We received a very positive note as a student athlete at Fortson, and we have a certificate for him. And so I'd ask that if he could come up with, and we appreciate, you know, his positive. We got a great email from an official that talked about his sportsmanship within the district. And I know the board saw it. So I'm going to let him come up, and maybe David or somebody can present that. Maybe Dr. Chokol.
I'm going to take a moment and read the actual email that come up that, that came to us. This was written to the athletic director of the, of Fortson High School. Says, "I wanted to bring to your attention a very positive experience I had with a member of your varsity football team at the above-mentioned game. I was assigned to officiate the game. I was looking forward to it, to say the least. After our crew took the field, approximately 30 minutes before game time, we were approached by a Fortson player, uniform number 33, who introduced himself to each of us, looked at us, and shook our hands. He went on to make it clear that if we, as a crew, needed anything during this game, that he was the player to contact as he took on a leadership role immediately. We all thought it was the way to be a leader. Throughout the highly competitive game, I took this player up on his offer and used his leadership skills to communicate with his teammates. He approached the teammates positively and constructively. He was a very competitive player himself and gave 100% every play. He was a very competitive player himself and gave 100% every play. This player is the benchmark of a leader and I want to recognize him as such. He shows great pride in the Fortson program and exemplifies what the definitions of team and leadership are. It was a pleasure to have been a small part of his athletic experience. I do not know number 33's name, but he has made me a better official and I will use my positive experience with him for all high school students on how to be a true leader." Thank you, Mohammed.
I just want to thank my parents, the Fortson coaching staff, just for making me a better person and a better, better brother, a better son, a better person in the community. And I want to thank all of you guys for recognizing me. Thank you.
Don't run away. Mohammed, the, the district prides itself with things like inspire, educate, and celebrate. What you did inspired the board and we hope we have many more students that do these types of actions. You showed these students what they can do out on the field and that is one of the reasons why we wanted to bring you here to celebrate. Any additional comments from any of the, the trustees for Mohammed? Trustee Watts.
Yeah, I wanted to say, Mohammed, thank you so much for being that leader on the field because I think so often we don't get a chance to see those little moments. And I think your parents, I hope they're there with you, should feel so much pride. Because when I read that letter, I'll be honest, I cried. Because so often, like I said, we don't hear those stories. And I hope you're the first of many stories that we continue to share here at the board for those who are watching as well to know, like, we want to hear these stories. But I want to ask, what, who, who is your greatest inspiration?
My greatest inspiration is probably, is my parents because they taught me, shaped me, how who I am today.
Well, I'm, I'm sure they're very proud of you because I know, like I said, I read that letter and it was very inspiring. So thank you.
Trustee Barry.
When I saw the email come across, I was very proud of you, but I was not surprised. I've known you for many, many years and I, I was hoping you'd say your parents. You better have said your parents. Because, yeah, his parents do a lot of great things in the community and they did a great job with Mohammed and his sisters. So very, very proud of you, man.
Trustee Moser.
I would like to commend you as well, Mohammed, and to commend your teammates and your coaches. I've been to a few games, Fortson and the atmosphere there is amazing. And your work on the field and off the field is noticed that you're a student leader and they exemplify that every day and I truly appreciate that. You're an ambassador to, to the community for our school. So thank you so much once again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.